Okay.
No more.
We'll call the...
It doesn't have to be televised, it just has to be noticed.
I'm not thrilled.
We'll call the joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency. May I have a roll call for the City Council?
Council members Draymond...
Here.
Friedman...
Here.
Najarian...
Weaver...
Here.
Mayor Quintero...
Could we call the roll for the Agency, please?
Agency members Friedman...
Here.
Najarian...
Quintero...
Here.
Weaver...
Here.
Chairman Draymond.
Here.
And the record will reflect that Councilman and Agency member Najarian is here, but he just stepped rear room for a moment.
Okay, may we have your report?
Agenda for the October 27, 2009 joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency was posted on Thursday, October 22, 2009, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
All right, Mr. Starbird.
If I may, I will read the record. Thank you, item before you today is Director of Parks Recreation and Community Services and of Development Services Regarding Construction Progress at the Glendale Adult Recreation Center Project. At 1A is Council Motion to Note and File Report.
And I'll go to Dave Ahern for the update. Mr. Chairman, Mayor Quintero, the report before you today provides you with an update on the progress of the Adult Recreation Center project. This project was approved by the Agency and the Council on April 27 of this year. At that time, we had anticipated an 18-month schedule. The contractor, Hopkins Construction, projected a 15-month construction schedule, and he's actually ahead of that schedule. So progress on the project is moving ahead. We anticipate that we will be done with this project in August or sooner of 2010. The project budget was $7.9 million. That included $1 million in contingency funding. To date, we've expended about 35 percent of the project funds, about $2.3 million roughly. We have approved about $65,000 in change orders, which is less than 1 percent of the project budget. Overall, the project is moving ahead per plan. We're spending a little extra time doing quality control inspections, confirming that the construction is not going to leave us with any of the difficulties that we've seen in other projects. Staff is very pleased with the way the contractors performing. We're available to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Weaver.
There's only one thing I'm concerned about, is the project weatherized?
We are in the process of getting there now.
How much longer?
The roof is going on right now, as we speak.
Okay, how much longer do you think before it's weatherized?
It's probably another two weeks before we have a full wrap.
That's all I want to know.
Is there some weather coming in, or just...
Well, no, I mean, because if you pass through the start of the rainy season, but if it happened, we've had the experiences in the past, get water damage inside and change orders start going up as you're ripping stuff out.
As we know, it never rains until mid-November here in Southern California.
Of course, never.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you, Mr. Ahern. How about a motion to note and file?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Council members Draymond...
Yes.
Friedman...
Yes.
Najarian...
Yes.
Weaver...
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Next, Mr. Kasakian.
Next item on the agenda is Director of Public Works and of Development Services Regarding Award of Professional Services Agreement for Downtown Environmental Graphics. At 2A is a Council Motion Awarding Contract to Hunt Design for Development of Environmental Graphics Manual, Downtown Parking Sign Program, and Downtown Wayfinding Program, an amount not to exceed $186,808, including contingency. At B is Agency Motion Awarding Contract to Hunt Design for Development of Environmental Graphics Manual, Downtown Parking Sign Program, and Downtown Wayfinding Program, an amount not to exceed $186,808, including contingency. At C is Council Resolution Appropriating $119,337 to provide funds for the installation of parking signs and the half of funding for the environmental graphics manual. And D, Agency Resolution Appropriating $67,471 to provide funds for installation of wayfinding signs and half the funding for the environmental graphics manual.
Ms. Friedman, did you have...
Well, I didn't know if you were going to ask for a presentation from staff, but my question was, I did see in the previous item that there was going to be coordination between the branding effort and this, but it seems to me premature to be... I understand that we probably have a need, because we're getting close to the holidays, but I would hate for us to do a bunch of signs and then next year to rip them all out, because we now have a recommendation from our, from North Star that we should have signs that look like this, that, or the other thing.
It's no coincidence that these items are together, and we do look for a coordination. In the interim, Alan Loomis, I can give you a short answer on what we have planned for the process.
Well, before he does, did you also have a comment?
It was a housekeeping issue.
Did we move A and C together?
I just wanted to know whether A and C could be taken together, and then the two agency items, B and D, could...
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then we'll have Mr. Loomis give his presentation.
Yes, thank you, Alan Loomis, Principal Urban Designer for the Planning Department. Ms. Friedman, to answer your question, we do anticipate there being coordination. One of the reasons we'd like to start this process right now is actually so our consultant can be on the ground during the holiday season and see the kind of impacts, the sort of traffic management issues we have to deal with during the holidays, as part of their analysis phase. But to give you a brief introduction of what the project is, I have one slide if you'll indulge me.
Only one?
Only one, but six images on one slide, so I'm cheating.
See how it works now.
So is this slide showing us that we have our branding already, clearly?
What a sneaky way to get six slides.
If you recall, in 2007, you adopted a mobility study for the downtown. One of the key recommendations was that we should more efficiently and better manage our public parking resources. The result of that recommendation was that in, last year in 2008, in the fall, you authorized the installation of the digital meters on Brand Boulevard, and abandonment of the old validation program in the parking garages in favor of allowing the first 90 minutes in the garages to be free. At that time, we installed some temporary signs indicating that, but did not take down any of the other signs. As you can see from the slide, we now have about half a dozen different kinds of wayfinding signs related to parking alone in the downtown, which is understandably confusing to some of our visitors. So the proposal in front of you is a contract with a graphic designer that specializes in wayfinding signs that would take on this challenge, developing a unified sign program for the downtown in collaboration with North Star and their marketing efforts, so that the two brands would... The branding that effort that North Star would develop would be reinforced when you actually come to visit Glendale through the signs you see. To give you a brief introduction of the firm we'd like you to hire, I'd like to introduce Mike Nielsen, who is our mobility planner in the Planning Department, and he serves as a kind of liaison between Planning Department, Public Works Department, and all the other departments to make sure our mobility strategies and programs are all coordinated and that different departments are coordinating. And in that capacity, he'd be the project manager for this contract, so, Mike?
Good afternoon, members of the Agency and Council. We selected, we recommend selecting Hunt Design for this project. Just to give you some background on Hunt Design, their firm was established in 1977. They're a Pasadena-based firm with extensive experience in wayfinding and environmental graphics. They established the original sign program for Old Pasadena back in 1985, and many of those signs are still used to this day. Some of their recent projects include sign updates for the Hollywood Bowl and downtown Burbank, as well as sign guidelines for the Golden Gate National Recreation Area and the LA Zoo. Some of Hunt Design's current clients include the DC Fine Arts Commission and National Park Service, and they're in charge of updating the signs for the National Mall. In regards to this specific project, we are proposing a professional services agreement be awarded to Hunt Design in the amount of $186,808, which includes a 10 percent contingency. Thirty-six percent of that would be covered through the redevelopment fund, and 64 percent would be covered through the parking fund. This is a full-service contract, so this includes all the design work, production of construction-ready CAD drawings, bid documents, all the workshops, any hearings, and as well as Hunt Design will help us in reviewing the fabrication and installation of signs. In terms of the timeline, like Alan inferred, that we would like to work with the branding effort. We would intend for Hunt Design to start a site assessment during the holiday season to take advantage of when our pedestrian and vehicular traffic into downtown Glendale is at its peak. From there, we hope to come with results from that site assessment and work on design, and with the completion of design work by spring of 2010, with the hope of installing new signs by the 2010 holiday season. From there, I would like to introduce Wayne Hunt of Hunt Design, and either Wayne or any member of the project team would be happy to answer any questions in regards to this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nielsen.
Mr. Mayor, Agency, and Council, I didn't prepare a presentation, I was more ready for questions, but this is pretty good. I'm from Pasadena, and we had some Pasadena discussion. I have some insight into passing a branding, by the way, which is total dumb luck, has been pointed out here in the past. I'm also a paying member of a P-bid, as a small property owner, and I can speak to that, and that's a great thing to do. And I have a large wayfinding project in Florida, and the entire...
Boy, that's quite an afternoon for you.
Entire county of Vravard, which is on the east coast of Florida, with 17 cities doing a joint wayfinding program, so I'm kind of connecting to all these conversations. We're in the understanding business with cities. We make cities accessible, understandable by means of wayfinding signage. That slide that you saw about the parking is a slide we prepared, and when I did the interview, I said, "Are you guys in the parking business? Is that the primary business of Glendale?" Because if you come to Glendale, it looks like all the signs are about parking. And clearly, cities with parking signs are really in the retail business in the end, but the parking is the gateway to retail experiences. So our mission is to welcome drivers and then get them parked, and then turn the drivers into pedestrians, and then by means of pedestrian signage, turn them into shoppers. So that's our idea. We've done 26 similar kinds of projects, mainly in California, with wayfinding. This is the first one that is really parking-based, and the bulk of the fee and the effort is to rework the main parking imagery and parking messages in Glendale. So the city downtown wayfinding is the smaller portion, which is the greeting part. I teach at Art Center College of Design. I've got a staff of 15, which is fairly big for our business. I'll take any questions about the process.
Mr. Starbird.
I'll defer to Ms. Friedman. She's probably going to ask the same question I was going to ask.
So this bid, in other words, this contract, is really only for the parking?
No, it's for the downtown wayfinding and the parking signage. However, those two need a common visual language of typefaces and fonts and maybe international symbols, so we're going to proceed that with a kind of a standards manual, a signing standards manual, which will include elements that can be used in the parks, and any city signage could draw from this manual in the future to make a unified...
So it's for the downtown only?
Oh. It could be applied citywide, but the...
I understand, in terms of, in terms of the study that you're going to be doing, where I'm assuming, and tell me if I'm wrong, that part of what you're doing is going to be not just looking at the signage, but looking at, you're doing the engineering too, in terms of where we want to direct the traffic?
Oh, that's correct, that's correct.
So that's only going to be for the downtown?
It's going to be sort of parking-focused and Brand Boulevard-focused, but I'm going to look at it from the southern tip of San Fernando, clear up to the library.
Okay, then I have more of a comment for staff. I don't even know if it's a question or a comment, which is that we have a planner in Colin Bogart, who's working on bike and pedestrian access. He's working on, they need to coordinate as well, and I would like to see this to include bikes as well. If we're doing pedestrians and cars, we should deal with all traffic.
I'll chime in. I've actually been working with Colin pretty actively in keeping him informed with this process, as well as Mark Suravan from Parks and Recreation. We actually have George Baltaria that's been involved in the process, as well as Peter Verhyleg, who initially started. So we intend to work with Parks and Recreation, Public Works, Traffic and Transportation, and also we have a larger city working group, in addition to the five different departments that have been involved, from the RFQ process to the selection of Hunt Design as our recommendation. So we intend to have a multi-departmental effort as part of this process.
Good, and this gives me a good opportunity to plug Colin's community meetings, which are going on now.
Which I, yeah.
So maybe you can give the dates, but what's been happening is that people have been showing up, now I'm addressing the camera, that people have been showing up and talking about what the city has in the past identified as pedestrian and bike sort of paths around the city, and they've been giving their own input as to what's working and what's not working. And I just want to be sure that we don't have a firm doing engineering, but then it comes back later that through the series of meetings, our bikers have been saying, "Oh, but we hate that road, we want to take this road instead," so...
It's been fairly strategic in terms of, yeah, and we want to make sure that the bikes and vehicular riders and pedestrians and transit riders, that all that signage is coordinated.
Okay, I'm glad to hear it, and I just, you know, just want to be really sure that as he's coming up with the sherros and his bike paths, that we're all on the same page, and that we don't end up working at cross purposes and finding out that we've put our wayfinding signs in places that he's determined aren't a good places, so I'm glad to hear that you're coordinating.
Mr. Starbird, then Mr. Lansky.
Well, I'd like to come back to the question of relating the branding with this work. You mentioned that this work should come together in the spring of 2010. Are you comfortable that's all going to relate well with the effort we have underway for branding?
I think it is. I think the, if you look at the parking signage as being highly functional, the parking signage would be less of a brand statement and more, a little more function-driven and more neutral. When it comes to city gateways, I think the brand has a stronger role, but I think there's a kind of parking communication crisis on Brand Boulevard that you can't wait two years for new signs. So I think we can coordinate. We will be out ahead of them a little bit, but I think we can coordinate.
I was just going to add that part of this is to create a manual of fonts and graphics to use in the future, so that two years from now, after we're all done with this, we need to create some signage for a bike path or something else. We have a reference manual, and it's something that every department can use, so that we're all consistent.
I have some comments. You can have a seat, sir, for now. A few years ago, and Mr. Weaver certainly remembers, when we did our kind of brown and gold signs that we put together, spent a lot of time on design, a lot of time on color. I personally think it looked great. However, if you were to ask me where they are right now, I think there's one at the entrance to Glendale there along San Fernando Road. They're so beautiful, they're so nondescript and so classy, that I don't think anyone reads them. So quite frankly, I hope this time, we are going to come up with a design that people will see, that if it takes a little slap in the face, they will absolutely see where it is that they're sort of wanting to go, but specifically the parking. The parking, I just cannot believe that after all these years, people are still not aware of the two largest parking structures in the city of Glendale, which are along Orange and along Maryland. Those two big parking structures, I'm just beside myself how they just kind of ignore them. So I hope for those structures, maybe we can tie it in with the Neon Museum, I hope we can really light it up, so there's no question, and make it public. Maybe sometimes people aren't even aware that it is a public parking lot, but we badly need signage on those two particular structures. The other structure, the one on, the other one on Maryland, the Exchange. The Exchange, I think people understand it's heavily used, but the other two, we absolutely need to brand it, to identify it, to really make a big push to get people to use it, because I just think they drive by it out of sight, out of mind, even though it's certainly large enough. And then on the idea of colors, some cities recently, I mean, really stand out. I was in Santa Monica on Sunday, and that particular, all the signs there in Santa Monica are very easy to read, they've got that sort of logo with the wave, the blue, I mean, it really stands out. And you go to other cities that you can't help but be kind of directed to where you're going, especially sometimes if I'm going to a city where I'm looking for the City Hall or even parking somewhere near a particular zone. So I hope our consultant, you certainly seem well-qualified to do it. I'm going to be voting for, and I'm against visual pollution, that's what I, and I'm definitely against visual pollution. However, in this particular case, I really think we need to work on graphics and specifically make the parking structures stand out and direct people to those structures.
Other comments before I go to the public?
Well, I'm just pleased that you know where those signs actually ended up. I believe last year, we, the Council actually voted to create historic neighborhood signs. We even appropriated the funds, and I don't know where those are, so maybe I should look by the ones that you found, and see if they're hiding around there.
Okay, we'll go to the public. Herbert Milano.
Mayor Quintero, members of the City Council, my name is Herbert Milano. One more time, I think that this is a, quite an energizing meeting, at least from me and from my perspective, because as Ms. Friedman stated, you know, the city does need to really now pull together all of these various strategies and really go forward with one comprehensive overall strategy for the city. Mr. Draymond, when you were promoting the signage for the neighborhoods, I thought that was a terrific idea. And by the way, I did manage to see one, in fact, I was pretty excited in actually seeing one up by your area, and it was, so I saw the sign for the first time, and I was obviously been coming to council when I saw the other signage that Mr. Quintero refers to. And now we're looking at additional signage now for downtown. I think that maybe the overall scope of how the city's signage will develop as one comprehensive part of your strategic plan will be essential. I'd like to add one more requirement, if perhaps you would consider it. The traffic on California and Lexington is incredibly heavy, especially during 5:00 PM and as people are moving towards the freeway. And finding the freeways oftentimes are a very difficult thing for the local guests that come down in this area. And so we find a lot of individuals basically using California, using Lexington, using Duran, and by 5:30, 6:00 PM, I dare you to try to drive those roads, try this Friday, and you will see how incredibly jammed they are. I think that the traffic needs to be included with regard to redirecting people as to the best way to get on the freeway. So I don't think it's just limited to all of this. I think the city needs a comprehensive look at all of its signage to make sure that they're truly, you know, stand out and coordinated. But I certainly hope that the city moves towards having, you know, one of these events yearly, and I recommend the, Mr. Quintero, the UCLA Retreat up in the...
Lake Arrowhead?
Lake Arrowhead, yes.
Okay, any comments from... Nope, okay, a motion.
Mr. Draymond, move to A and C for the Council.
Second.
Roll call.
Council members Draymond...
Yes.
Friedman...
Yes.
Najarian...
Yes.
Weaver...
Aye.
Mayor Quintero...
Yes.
Mr. Draymond, move to B and D for the Agency.
I'll second it.
I have a motion as second, Mr. Kasakian, please.
Agency members Friedman...
Yes.
Najarian...
Yes.
Quintero...
Yes.
Weaver...
Aye.
Chairman Draymond...
Yes.
Okay, what's next?
Move to adjourn for the City Council.
Second.
Move to adjourn for the Agency.
Second.
You adjourn.
If a fire broke out in your home, are you prepared to get your family out? Smoke detectors are your first line of defense. Having and practicing an escape plan could be the difference between life and death for your family. As firefighters, we respond to tragedies every day. Hello, I'm firefighter Grendo with the Glendale Fire Department. Your Glendale firefighters want to remind you to have an escape plan. Don't get caught with no way out.
Hi, I'm firefighter Muske's with the Glendale Fire Department. This Halloween, we want you and your family to have a fun but safe holiday, and here are a few tips. Make sure fabrics for costumes and decorative materials are flame resistant. Teach your kids how to stop, drop, and roll. Choose costumes and masks that allow for good visibility when out trick-or-treating. Children should carry flashlights and/or incorporate other lightings such as glow sticks as part of their costumes.
as part of their costumes. Also, use flashlights or battery-operated candles when illuminating jack-o'-lanterns. Decorations such as crepe paper, hay, and cornstalks are highly flammable. Keep these and other decorations away from open flames and heat sources. Parents should accompany their children while trick-or-treating and discard anything that is unwrapped or tampered with. These tips will ensure a safe and fun Halloween. Happy trick-or-treating from the Glendale Fire Department.
This series focuses on programs and events that appeal to those of us in our golden years. In this segment, we'll join participants at the Adult Recreation Center as they observe Armenian Independence Day, help celebrate Halloween, and then finally, learn some valuable tips from State Insurance Commissioner Steve Poizner, as he shows us how we can better handle our insurance needs. First up, let's hear from Sevad Garabedian, as he explains the traditions and cultural activities associated with Armenian Independence Day.
Today, we're celebrating Armenian Independence Day. Armenia has two independances that it celebrates. One's on May 28th, and one is on September 21st. Today's celebration is the September 21st, 1991 independence from the Soviet Socialist Republic. And as of 1991, Armenia became a republic again, and it's independent to this day. The activity celebrating Armenian Independence Day has been going on for quite some time here at the Adult Rec Center, maybe four or five years now. This year, with me on the staff, being of Armenian descent, I could add a little bit more to the event when it comes to culture and donations and a little bit more authenticity. And basically, that's what we are trying to go for this year. We do celebrate cultural days for other ethnic groups. We celebrate Mexican Independence Day. We celebrate American Independence Day. We have various different events throughout the year, and the Armenian Independence Day is just one of the events that we celebrate. This is the Armenian alphabet. It was established in 406 AD by a person by the name of Saint Mesro, Mashdotz, and it's unique because for 400 years after the birth of Christ, Armenia still didn't have its own unique alphabet. And 406, we had our own unique alphabet. Armenian is one of the only languages that it doesn't share its alphabet with any other language. This is a ribbon of the Armenian flag. The Armenian flag is red, blue, and orange. The red stands for all the blood that our ancestors have shed, all the freedom fighters. The blue is the clear blue skies that you find in Armenia and the hope. And orange stands for the fertile land and the wheat fields that you see in Armenia. Today, we're serving meals that are not unique to Armenian culture, but they've become a part of the culture. We're serving beef kavlet, which is more of a Russian descent. It's basically a ground beef patty with some vegetables. We're going to be serving hummus, which is more of Middle Eastern descent, which is chickpeas and tahini sauce, sesame seed oil. And we're going to be serving paklava, which is of Greek descent, but Armenians eat it as well and enjoy. So we've done... Over the years, we've taken a little bit of each culture, and we've made it into our own, and that's basically what we're going to be serving today. Participants are encouraged to pay a $2.50 donation for the meal, but for those who can't afford it, there's nobody that's going to be questioning why they haven't paid. So it's up to them, and it's on the honor system.
My name is Adrele Farunyar, and I'm a recreation leader. I'm helping our coordinator to do events, activities here for senior. I was sensing, actually. It's an Armenian traditional dance that we do at in our weddings, events. It's very common, and everybody does. A dance has been performed for years.
Today, we're going to have Jivan Gasparian Jr., grandson of world-renowned duduk player for very famous soundtrack for movies like Gladiator and various different films. He's going to come and perform for us today. What's interesting is he's going to be playing the duduk, which is a 400-year-old instrument, if not longer, and he's about 24 years old, and he's really mastered that instrument, and it's going to be something very special.
My name is Jivan Jr., Jivan Gasparian Jr. I carry the same name and the last name, and I play the duduk. It's the real name is Zirana Fokh, it's just hard to say. Duduk symbolizes...